All the English about the many. Much easier for you.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Have we ever moved when you were retired with fifty six three?
Yes.
Um, a little bit in the league.
I did.
Well, I think.
Thanks, everybody ready?
Yep.
Good evening, everybody. We're going to first have a public hearing for variation order. Number nine oh two two zero two zero ninety one Hudson Bay. Um, this is this uh November the second two thousand and five. Meeting call to order at seven oh two P M. Supporting documentation for variation order nine nine two dash twenty ninety one Hudson Bay lot twenty two block one fifty four plan. Say forty nine P O P O Northern Division to reduce the side yard requirements on the accessory building from a required setback eleven feet to seven point seven five inches. And I will do administration.
Uh, yes, in this case, um, the building inspector went by and saw that a uh a garage structure that had been damaged by some snow damage um was being rebuilt. Um, then the way it was being rebuilt, um, the side yard was not being met under zoning by law. Um, the side yard is that is required here is eleven feet, but the way it was being built was leading seven point seven five inches. Uh, this would require a variation, so permission from council to do so. So, um, the owners have uh applied for variation order. This is now the hearing for people to come and make a presentation either for this or against this and for council to ask their questions.
Okay, and I would like to say I was remiss in saying Councilor Landmark has joined us by all this evening. Thank you, uh, rest of us are here. Uh, so now we're going to be receiving the presentations in favor or opposed. If you come to the desk and state your position, whether you're for or against, and give your name, please, and address.
It would just be to the table in the middle.
So I'm Sharon McKay, and I'm obviously in favor, ninety one Hudson is my property. I think the documentation you have before you is uh pretty straightforward. It's basically a carport that's being added on to a rebuilt porch that we have taken down.
Anything else, Sharon, that you want to add?
No, there's really nothing else to add. We have to take down the porch to deal with leakage into the basement. And um, so when we took down the porch, we decided we wanted to put a carport. But we didn't apply for a building permit. That's how all this started. And it sounds like somebody called it in and the inspector showed up with the stock permit. So it's not quite the way that it's being introduced. So we stopped and obviously. So the opportunity to shingle at that time where we're getting that snowfall that weekend. So all that is on the wayside right now. So really, it's a variation order that you're applying for and. I'm not sure if all that implies anything.
So council, we can ask any clarification questions. It's not a discussion, but if you have some questions based on the information you have, you may ask. Counselor Thornton?
Is the shed in the back, it's even on arrows, it's movable? It's on, it's a. On a foundation that's raised above the ground, I assume.
Yeah.
Near the concert, uh, Brayden, Councilor McMurdo?
Uh, I just wanted to know, is there an adjacent structure? Thanks. Um, and adjacent structure on their next door neighbor's property? Like to their carport?
No, no.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Can I have a question?
Constable Landmark is on the TV. Go ahead, Brian.
Um. Have you considered the shorting so you have a less of a variation or a bigger distance between yourself and your neighbors?
There is no way to shorten if it's a carport, you wanted a vehicle without the shortcut anywhere.
Did you hear that, Brian?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Wong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, my question to you, uh, Sharon, is your driving job, you don't need to drive at all? So you.
Yes.
Further questions, counsel? Administration, do you have anything else? Counselor Ellsworth?
I'm the.
Deputy Mayor, sorry.
On the carport itself, is there one or some brandy to put the e-trap on there at all? If you put the e-trap on there, if it's not already indicated in the seven point seven five inches, then that will be unwell of all and say three inches and. So is there an intent for some kind of a e-trap so that when you do have water, rain, melting, where it flows to?
I don't know what the engineer for all that, whether it's required or not. I don't have an answer for your question. I don't know. The engineer looked at the structure and he drew up the plan for it to meet uh whatever code he has to follow, I guess. So that's what I'm relying on. So what he's indicated on there is what will be followed. I'm not a carpenter or anything, so I'm not going to be able to tell you that.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you. Uh, this will be taken, put on the council agenda. Is there any other presentations in favor or opposed to this project?
Favor?
Your favor? And your name?
Dan Avrison. Ninety nine Hudson Bay.
Does any further comments, sir?
No, this is just the carport. It'd be nice, you know, to just put the vehicle in, get out of the snow, wind and.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any further presentations in favor or opposed? Final call. Any presentations favor or opposed to this project? Seeing none, we'll call for adjournment. Deputy Mayor, um, Ellsworth and Constable Colber. All those in favor? Seven ten, I would like to call the regular meeting of council for November the second twenty twenty to order. I'd like to mention that Councilor Landmark is on the hour that's completing on the screens. Uh, next, I would like to recognize that we are on thirty five land and we are all treaty people. Thank you very much. But I can approval of the agenda. Counselor Valentino, counsel crew, all those in favor?
Right.
Uh, community comments and feedback, that is our new title of our uh for folks to come forward. You state your name and just to note that this is ten minutes total. Thank you both presenting.
Yes, my name is Dave Douglas. I know these, I haven't been here since the pre- since the previous council was in. I haven't been here at all for a meeting since this new council has been sworn in, so. Just in case those of you who don't know me or haven't seen me before, sorry. Okay, first thing I have, like, there was be, there was a, I read in the, read in the local paper, somebody was questioning the uh appointment of the, they said, the particular individual who to uh take over from uh Dave Turpy as the chief elections officer. And she reported that everything went well, but uh when I went to vote at the events poll at the recreation center. I was standing there being called for the first ten minutes that I was not on the voters list, when I know I was on the voters list. And it wasn't until I I grabbed my photo I D and went to walk out and said that I would see how the, see how the Federal Election Commission would feel about the fact that I was denied my vote. And then all of a sudden, oh, look, there you are, you're on the list. He was looking for the first ten minutes. Apparently, he he didn't know the difference between even numbers and odd numbers on the voting list. Because he was looking on the even list for ten minutes and my address is an odd number. But as soon as I started walking away, he called me back and immediately found my name on there. And that, to me, almost falls under the category of voter suppression. And I don't think that uh either the person that was there was intentionally uh trying to screw me around. Or the person was not trained properly in how to read a voters list, in which case the last place they should be is the first counter you see when you go in there. So with uh anybody willing to address that uh concern, because that should never happen when somebody is, especially someone like me, I've been on the voters list ever since I've been here, I voted every single election. I know I'm on the voter list, but be going there and be called for ten minutes that I don't, I'm not on the voters list because this person didn't understand how to, how to read it.
Thank you, administration.
Yeah, I wouldn't have the specifics of what happened to you, Mr. Chuglin, but I can reach out to our senior election official and ask um if they know why this happened to you. And I can also ask for statistics on how many people were turned away from the polls.
Okay, now another, another matter that's got to come up here. Uh, I will remind you that it is the ten year and six month anniversary since the city unlawfully took away my taxi driver's license. Because of a charge that was against me, and even though it none of the, I was never convicted on any of those charges. My taxi driver's license was not reinstated. In fact, it was told by, it was deemed by uh Ian Thompson that the suspension is permanent. Now, every single thing about that is completely contrary to the Charter of Rights and Freedoms. I was denied my, denied the right to be proved innocent until proven guilty. I was denied the right to speak for myself through the courts. I was, when my, I was denied legal access to the whole process because the day after my license was suspended from me, my uh, my corrupt unethical Thompson lawyer decided to quit on me. Without following his proper procedures, he quit and he tried to claim I was fired. So I was left, left for the entire risk that process without proper legal counsel. So everything about that move to suspending my license and keeping it suspended was completely illegal. And I was just wondering if uh there's going to be any consideration made to overturning that uh, that unlawful decision and possibly discussing some compensation for, financial compensation for me for all the. Pain and suffering and destruction of my reputation and everything else that went along with that.
Administration?
Yes, again, on this one, I have no files on that that I'm aware of. I'll have to go into our file system and have a look there. If there's specific requests you're looking from the city, I would ask that you put it in writing, then we can bring that forward to council for consideration. And if any information you want to present to council.
Everything, everything that was on there, I I tried to present at the uh taxi, taxi commission meetings, but they were, they were a farce, just like they, just like they always were, because their mind was already made up. And no, nothing I said would have a chance would make any difference. And I was actually denied a chance to ask a question, which would clearly, clearly show that there was an, there was an issue with the way the city was treating me. So, and uh regarding and leading from that, we're talking about, we're talking about by, like, you've seen the license inspector seems to be, seems to have the, think they have the power to uh. Completely disregard the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms. And there's a couple of clauses written in the taxi bylaw which clearly do that. Because she can make a decision that denies and denies anybody the right to be presumed innocent until proven guilty. Like she just makes an arbitrary decision and that's it. Like she had, there's, there is uh with all these new orange cabs. I was wondering how on earth she, they, they were all able to get uh, get licensed, the licenses to operate as taxi cab vehicles in the city, Thompson, when not one of them is in compliance with the taxi bylaw. Where, where it comes to the size and the location and the uh clarity of the uh numbers identifying the cars. They are clearly not in compliance with the bylaw because their numbers are that much smaller than every other cab you'll see in the city. And when I called to ask her about that, she said, oh, yeah, I measured them and they are, they're definitely, they're definitely too small. But she didn't answer the question of how these, how these vehicles all got passed with that violation. They've been not being in compliance with the taxi bylaw, but she gave them all licenses anyway.
I think that's another thing that if you write it up and write your concerns and then it can be looked at.
Okay, and there's another one I noticed, just looking through the, looking through this agenda here, this, all these changes to be made to the animal control. There's one thing says here, right, park, chase or stalking of animals, bicycles and vehicles. Now, the way this is written here and the way the words are spelled. It does not give the, that clause right there is completely, completely unenforceable because. I don't, can't think of any definition for stalking of animals, bicycles and vehicles. I believe, I believe they meant to be another word, but the word is spelled way different from the way this word is spelled. And uh, again, I complained about the taxi bylaw many times to the previous council about how the wording is so poor. And uh, the wording that's in there allows the light allows uh people to get away with doing things they should not be allowed to get away with. Like, like again, suspension of my taxi license included, but if this is the type of quality control that is going through, that is going through on these bylaws. This, and this thing was signed by Sonny Wiseman, who all people should know better. Uh. It's no wonder that uh, it's no wonder that uh, say that we have bylaws here that are uh contract, that don't uh. Don't agree with the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms, which every single document is supposed to, that is the base, that is the basis of my, my issue with my license. And it seemed like every go where I go, I see more and more, I see more and more evidence to show that.
Okay, thank you. Please put all your concerns in writing. Uh, time is up for tonight. Feel free to come back. And that, but if you wish, put things in writing and uh reach out to our city manager with the, your concerns and it'll come back to us.
Okay. I had a chance, I'm glad I was having a chance to speak to the other new counselors that I, that haven't heard from you before on this matter, so.
Thank you.
Something that should be considered because there, there's a very good possibility this may be pursued in court, so I think the city might want to hear that.
Thank you. Um, we've got one minute left. Is there any other community concerns or comments and feedback? Third and final time, any community comments and feedback? Thanks. Seeing none, we are going to go after the adoption of minutes. I have an after a pause, excuse me, tonight I have a heck of a time reading with the mask. Five point one is the regular meeting of council October nineteen twenty twenty. Resolution two zero two zero one eight three moved by Councilor Wong, accepted by Deputy Mayor Ellsworth. It resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of council, within council chamber, city hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, October nineteen twenty twenty be adopted as circular. Administration?
Nothing further.
Council, no questions, concern? Call for the question, all those in favor?
Right.
Carrie. We're going, now going to go to six, six point one is a committee and external committee reports. Uh, we'll go to Jenny.
The twenty nineteen audited financial statements were received from the auditor last week and presented to council. And there is an unqualified audit pending for twenty nineteen. Uh, there is no deficit or surplus for the year as all the transfers identified by council last year were completed with the exception of twenty two thousand to the public safety reserve, uh leaving a zero balance in the surplus. Uh, the audit was delayed this year due to a delay in an audit received from a control entity, and the city is currently looking at ways for rents from happening in the future. Uh, the audit will be available on the city's website for the public following this meeting.
Thank you. Six point two is a report from their senior election officer in regards to the twenty twenty by-election.
Sure, I can address this. Uh, so we received a report from a senior election official um with respect to the election that was run um several weeks ago. Uh, the officials recommended that the advanced polls in the future be run in the T R C C, as they round very well there. And the change in the venue from the elementary schools worked well for the by-election. Uh, this is her first um election as the senior election official, and the election official sent the city of Thompson's mayor council. The details are there in her report.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Thornton?
Just to comment that the typically my, my election numbers are significantly lower than regular elections. Before we uh take a recommendation like the T R C C, I think we should probably keep that in mind as well. Thank you.
Thank you, and I may go back. I may have been remiss in asking if there was any comments on the audited financial statements. Deputy Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I was going to make some comments. We sat to the process last week uh. For the audit finance statements, and and I want to tell you, one of the things I recognized was that. Both Jenny and our auditor have put a lot of time and energy into preparing those uh reports. It took months and months of hard work, and I want to acknowledge them in, in, in the council for that work. But also want to say that going forward in the future, as Jenny already said, we need to do, uh, you know, make sure that everyone's reporting in. That we don't get tied up with other people's financial reports, which is combined with some dollars. So Jenny, thank you for the work you did, and certainly pass that up in the nation as well.
Thank you. Any other um questions concerning the audit? Thank you, and I do apologize for that. Uh, six point three is the September check registers are in our package. Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's not a question, it's just a follow up. Because when we approved the resolution to ward peace out to spread all the mattresses, box spring and uh counters. I did ask the question because the contract written is up to eighty hours. So my question to the mission that kind, who document those hour? So the city manager replied, there will be someone doing that. So my, my follow up is like, is no document available to us to look at it, just as far. To pay up forty eight thousand dollars, then two hundred dollars?
Administration?
I don't have that, but I'll follow up with that to see if I can get that for you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Ellsworth?
Yeah, um, I would ask that that information be brought to the finance committee or the new committee in the future, so that we can have a look at it. And I also want to find out, and I'm not picking on anyone. But that statement, again, I have asked as the finance chair, make sure that one of those out, make sure that all the counselors gets it, so they can have an opportunity to deal. I just want to remind them again that I do push that, I don't know the chairs over in the future, but I know for my turn, I pushed it to make sure because council needs to see it. So they have any questions, they can then forward to whoever needs to be forwarded in the finance department. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Wong, Beth? Anything else?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Any other concerts? Question on check right here? Okay, thank you. We'll move on. Seven is correspondence. Seven point one is a letter from Rochelle Squires, Minister of Municipal Relations, in regards to funding from the Manitoba Restart Program. Federal Safe Restart Funding and Safe Restart Transit allocations for municipalities. Minister Squires' letter to her worship colleague Smith. I am pleased to provide you with an update on funding for municipalities that will assist with economic recovery in light of the impact of COVID nineteen pandemic. The Manitoba Restart Program, the Manitoba government is providing five hundred million dollars as in part of the stimulus package to help restart Manitoba's economy. This includes two hundred and thirty million dollars in funding for Manitoba, for Manitoba's contributions to investing in Canada infrastructure program. Manitoba has advanced its prioritize list of projects to the government of Canada for approval. Once I C I P projects are approved at the federal level, Manitoba is prepared to advance provincial funds to municipal partners to allow planning and construction to commence without delay. The Manitoba Restart Program also includes an additional fifty million dollars to be provided in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty one, twenty two for water and wastewater projects. This is in addition to the annual uh base budget for Manitoba Water Services Board grants. A total of forty one point one million dollars of this funding will be provided to municipalities with the remaining eight point nine million allocated for parks for water and sewer projects. We have reached our municipalities, we have reached out to the municipalities receiving this funding. Manitoba has reached an agreement with the federal government on the allocation of its share of the nineteen billion dollars provided to provinces and territories under the Safe Restart Agreement. Manitoba's share of the Safe Restart Funding will include seventy two point six million dollars in operating costs for municipalities and thirty three million. Dollars for public transit support. The seventy two point six million in municipal operating funding will be distributed to all municipalities on a per capita basis. That means that municipalities outside of Winnipeg will receive approximately thirty two point seven million dollars in operating funding. Funding will be released to municipalities in the coming days. Your municipality-specific operating allocation is eight hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred ninety eight dollars and seventy three cents. Manitoba has committed to, to matching federal funding in municipalities and has already made significant contributions. In addition to the two hundred and eighty million dollars within Manitoba Restart Funding outlined here above, Manitoba has advanced seventy five percent. Of unconditional municipal operating basket funding in the spring of two thousand and twenty, with the remainder provided in September and permitted to additional funding of forty five million dollars in disaster. Prevention funding and five million dollars for fire protection grants. Safe restart transit allocation. We're in the process of determining the distribution of the thirty three million dollars Manitoba will receive for public transit support under the federal Safe Restart Agreement. Distribution will be based on operating issues compared to the same pre-COVID periods, as well as ridership levels information from the municipalities with transit services. Winnipeg, Brandon, Selkirk, Thompson and Flintline. In order to ensure that the distribution of funds is fair and accurate as possible, we are requesting that you please provide operating loss information and. And ridership information for twenty nineteen. This will ensure that our information is correct and up to date. To help us better understand the impacts of the pandemic, we also. Are requesting any information you have showing transit losses. That are already attributed to COVID nineteen. Please submit information to Stephanie. Close at such and such and including I've. I look forward to. Concluding the collaboration work with our government, Manitoba's municipalities. As we face challenges brought to COVID two hundred twenty nineteen or COVID nineteen. So eight eight hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety eight dollars and seventy three cents. A good news story for Thompson. Administration?
Nothing further.
Deputy Mayor?
So this eight hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety eight dollars and seventy three cents, is that new money?
I think.
Yeah, those are new dollars that were budgeted for previously. I believe this is a flow from the federal government, through the government of Manitoba, to Manitoba's municipalities. Obviously Winnipeg gets the lion's share and then other municipalities are getting shares based on a per per capita basis.
Deputy Mayor?
So to follow up with that question then. Am I right to assume that the council as a whole will have to make a decision on that money would be used since it's not in the budget?
That's correct. It would go to council as a whole for part of the budget process or however council wants to decide how to spend these funds.
Thank you.
Need for the questions, counselors, comments? Counselor Wong?
I'm reading the last one about the the rooftop transit allocation. So. From what I understand is like if we have to show the loss to give it to. To apply this funding, am I right as city manager?
That's correct. We have to show that a loss is related to COVID. Not not general losses, the losses have to be related to COVID nineteen.
So that can I follow up please? So that means. Do we do we have any losses based on? The COVID nineteen since the day one announced to today our transit?
Um, I don't believe so, though I know the administration's looking at it. I don't believe that we would qualify under this one.
This would have helped in order to.
Yeah.
But if if we do qualify, we will definitely.
Any other counselors? Okay, seeing that, we'll move on. Eight point good good resolutions, eight point one is a resolution to approve variation order. Number nine nine two dash two zero dash ninety one Hudson Bay. Resolution number two zero two zero one eight four. Moved by counselor fountain seconded by counselor Valentino. Whereas the city of Thompson is in receipt of a variation order application number nine nine two dash twenty ninety one Hudson Bay. For lot twenty two block one fifty four plan eight four nine field field north division. To reduce the side yard requirements on the accessory building from a required setback of eleven feet to seven point. Seven inches. And whereas under the provisions of the planning act, a public hearing has been held to hear representations for and or against the variation work. Now therefore be resolved, the council approved variation order. Application number nine nine two dash twenty dash ninety one Hudson Bay for lot twenty two block one fifty four. Plan five eight forty nine field field north division with the following conditions. One, that a needs trough system be is installed in the accessory building to ensure that drainage. Flows on to the owner's property and away from the neighboring property and two. The snow. From the roof of the accessory building should not be allowed to enter the neighborhood property. Administration?
Um, not too much further. I would just say that this was reviewed at the development review committee. Uh, there is a vigorous debate at that committee. And a number of conditions were brought forward that if council were to consider this, that those conditions should be considered as well. Um, and now it's up to council to debate and decide if they would grant the variation. Or if there would vote against the resolution for the variation. Or if there's some other sort of conditions that council would like to impose.
Thank you. I'll start with counselor Wong.
So you what you say to me? This is kind of asking forgiveness in a way. Because. To me, it looks sounds like this. Why did some sort of the variance? So now we just retroactive trying to get it. Second point I want to make is like, I think it's pretty standard lately in New Thompson, everybody asking for the variance is pretty much the standard. Uh, my point is like if I if we approve for one, we should approve the two. Again, we all receive like I'm the neighborhood, so I receive the notification. And tonight I don't see anybody that are against it, especially the one adjacent to the building, the property. The neighbor did not oppose that changes. So I think I myself, I will support that because due to the president being made in the hall.
Thank you. Counselor round Dana?
Yeah, I'll be supporting this as is, um, as long as the following conditions are noted as to the building inspector's comments. And I appreciate the discussion through development review committee. I apologize for not being there for the vigorous discussion, but I'll be supporting this as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McMurdo?
Um, yes, I'd like to support as well. Or there were no objections from the adjacent neighbor and the fire and emergency protective services don't seem to object, so I'll support as well.
Deputy Mayor Olson?
Yeah, we had quite a discussion in our development review committee on this issue. And some of the things you see now that's included is because of that, I am concerned. When you're only seven point seven five inches away from your neighbors, I personally been cut the incurred problems over the years with flooding. That took years of loving to fix. If these conditions are met, even though I I really struggle because it's only like one seven and a half inches. When someone else is there. I struggle with that, but the conditions are met, that the. Water is kept on their own property, the snow is kept on their own property. And then I would certainly look at voting in favor, but I also want to say that, you know. Counselor of. Wong brings up a very interesting point. We're getting variances all the time. And I don't know how you can approve some and not approve others. So if we're walking down this road, we need to understand what that means. And so there's a lot of variances. That come in, I would say in the last trip for months. Uh, from different people building patio decks to garages being made bigger. Consider later, I don't know where our bylaw goes, but certainly that's my plan on it. And these people to the golden review committee first. And there's a lot of discussion to be had there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cooper?
Uh, yes, I want a clarification first. Dan, the neighbor, he said he lived at ninety nine, am I correct? He's not the neighbor. He's a door down. Right? So of course he like to see it, right? But we haven't heard from the neighbor. I agree with Counselor Ellsworth that all the conditions are met and. Oh, flooding on neighbor's property, no snow on neighbor's property. I'm okay with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Pro?
I I will support this, uh, but in the same way, I will also state that it is important to get your building permit ahead of time. It's easier to do that than. Stop a project and run through the headache of getting approval later. But it's really nice to see that we, in a way, are getting all these variation orders because that means people are investing in Thompson and putting money into their property. So I do like that part of it. And the yards are sometimes a bit small for bigger garages and whatnot, but. Uh, yeah, we definitely do see a trend of a lot of variation orders coming through that's proven constitute, but all in all, I'll support this.
Thank you. Counselor phone?
Yeah, the conditions require the landowner to take some responsibility for the development that's going on our property. For me, I think that's an appropriate mitigation for the concerns that have been brought to the table. I believe in property rights. I think you should be able to do for the most part what you want to do with your properties, although it's not a bridge on anything else's property. Probably supporting this happily.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Landmark, did you have any comments?
Uh. And reservations, I have reservations about this. I won't supporting it. I I believe in development, think it's a great thing and it's in your own property, it's great. I just don't, I don't see how. With a curved driveway. That they're going to be able to keep snow off their prop, the neighbor's property. There's a reason why we have some setback. This is only seven inches. By the time you put a eavesdrop on it. I've been around enough houses, there's not going to be all the snows are going to be captured by that eavesdrop. It's going to be the neighbors and I don't know. We haven't heard from their neighbor in particular. The. Neighbors change. And there's little things that you can fight over your neighbors with and. I can't see that going well in the future. And I've looked at many very. Variations. Where I don't see them encroaching on somebody else's property, but I don't know how. Unless you're really going to be up on top of your roof every year shoveling snow. And ensuring that it lands in your driveway and you're taking it away, that that's going to be possible. So I don't see this, uh, but more voted anyway, so. I won't be supporting this. Thanks.
Another piece of information I'd like to share with all my colleagues here.
Did you speak up just a bit, please?
That's what I said. I said, there's another piece of information I'd like to share with all the all my colleagues about this property adjacent to. I believe that property could be going to the receivership pretty soon. So that's why the the complaints aren't coming through here. So. Just just a piece of information.
Thank you.
That adjacent to this.
Any further comments? Deputy Mayor?
It was posted, correct?
Pardon?
It was posted.
The process, the variation is posted and then letters are sent to all the neighbors within a certain radius around that home. Um, they receive the letter telling them the time and date of the hearing that was just held. And it also gives them the opportunity to submit in writing if they can't attend the hearing. Or to call the inspector and submit a complaint or support.
Thank you. Counselor phone?
Yeah, I thank you, Aunt Mayor. I appreciate Counselor Mark's comments. And I. I'd like to think that there won't be any problems, but. We've got two conditions here that the city's imposed upon the homeowner. What is the city prepared to do provided these aren't met? And obviously it's one thing to put a condition on a permit, it's another to view enforcement follow up.
My understanding is this is the, uh, these are the conditions for the development. So that's that addition of that property. If the conditions were not to be met, the city would have the right to have that demolished. It's a condition of what they're building.
Follow up? That done at the city's expense?
No, we'd order the property owner to do the demolishing. Unless they're not no longer there.
Anything else, Counselor? Okay, um. We'll call for the vote. Also, was in favor? Carrie?
No, no.
Yeah, opposed.
Oh, opposed? Sorry, Brian.
Frozen.
You're frozen.
Brian, are you opposing?
Yeah, he's opposed.
Okay, I can't see you.
Yes.
That's still carried.
Yeah.
Eight point two is a resolution to approve sole source. Purchase of multi sensors for the correlator machine. Resolution two zero two zero one eight five moved by Deputy Mayor Ellsworth seconded by counselor Valentino. It resolved the council approved sole source. Sole sourcing of the purchase of multi sensors for the correlator unit from. Heck, so solutions incorporated for the amount of twenty two thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and eighty one cents plus applicable taxes. Administration?
Yeah, so this is presented, I believe, at the Public Works Committee by the Director of Public Works. Previous, under the previous budget or this year's budget, I counsel to prove. The purchasing of our water break correlator, um, as the one that we currently had was outdated. When the crews came up to do their training with our staff, they brought these accessory sensors just to show the staff how they work. They set them up for one night and over that night they were able to find five water breaks. That for a while had been suspected, but we had no way of ever finding them. So this technology, uh, this additional technology could really help the city in identifying where some of those water losses are. That to this day have been unknown, but that we see in our water balance when we do our calculations. The reason it has to be sole sourced is accessories have to go with the original unit. So you can't buy a third party unit, it has to match up with the unit that we originally purchased. So. The request here is to do the sole source, um, to add these new sensors on to improve our public works ability to identify those kind of more hidden water breaks that don't come to the surface.
Thanks, and I think we should add that this new correlator has made it possible to be much more accurate in the finding of the. Water breaks and be more accurate in the. And the date. Deputy Mayor Olson?
Yeah, so again, in Public Works, we discussed this as well. And the city managers alluded to the fact that just through the training period, it was five additional. We don't know how many more water breaks through the city of council, we know nothing about. Because we didn't have equipment that would identify. So with this new piece, my understanding, I don't work at Public Works, but the information that I've received and others. Is this will pay for itself in very little time. It was not only will we not be throwing water away, that's what we're doing, wasting water, a lot of water. But also I believe someone already alluded to the fact that. There's a lot smaller area now that they can, when they go to excavate or whatever they do, to dig that hole, they don't have to dig a forty foot hole, it could be a twenty foot or a fifteen foot to get exactly where it's straight. So I certainly support buying the accessories for this piece of equipment.
Thank you, Counselor Wong.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I like I like to, I like gadget, so this is good. So at least, uh, we can help out the the waste for the water that go underneath, I think you can see it. The only question I'd like the administration is to ask this company, what else can we addition into the system? Because looks like this is a sales way of doing it. They give you one, two, they don't tell you they have another thing you can. Like compatible to it. So now we add one more thing. I just like to know what else can we add so we can make up a decision by doing all once rather than. Piece by piece by piece is a time sensitive to me because water waste is big deal to me. Thank you.
Okay, I'm good.
Yeah, I believe the administration was aware that there was a number of accessories at the time. When they brought it to budget, it was to their placement of identical with identical. So the old model that was not providing the service needed to anymore. The ask was replaced with the identical at the time to keep the budget down. But that it was clear that these additional capabilities are something that we had to bring to council's attention for consideration.
Thank you. Counselor Valentino?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Smoove. Yeah, this has been discussed at Public Works and I think it will. The new correlator and this part will make us be more efficient with some of the things we do as a city and how we operate. So we will improve on soft costs, maybe not per dollars, but you'll see soft costs by us being run more efficient with things that we do. In our operating dollars, but to the matter of fact, I'm just asking for the public dollar, the twenty two thousand dollars where it's coming from to purchase this from.
Ask for Jenny to respond to that if she could.
I'm sure it's coming from existing warrants or revenues.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor phone?
I'm just curious, what kind of service agreements is there to fix these when they're broke?
My understanding it'd be a standard warranty. I don't have that in front of me, Jenny, unless you know something other.
Thank you. Counselor McMurdo?
Uh, I was gonna ask a maintenance question. I think that was for Counselor Tom. Important just given the nature of sensors and the technical equipment that's calibrating could be an issue. And I also wanted to ask, did you say, uh, Anthony, that the tests were conducted in September? Or?
Um, I don't have it in my own front of me at the moment. Um, I don't know exactly when they had that crew up to you, Jenny. No, yeah, I wouldn't have that. I can get that information.
It was at our last public works meeting, so either the it could have been in the end of August.
Okay, I just wanted to follow up. I just wanted to know if they were affected with there's two or three pieces of snow on the ground or is it more something to use and catch up on the minor breaks to prepare.
There was no snow on the ground. I know when they did this. Wonder?
Just a question. I don't know if you'll have this one, but out of those five water main bridge we didn't know about, do we know how many like gallons per day we were using or it's?
There'd be no way to determine that until you actually opened up and saw the size of the hole. And then you have to calculate the flow and different things in the area. So no, with the. Oh, it's like counselor along more.
Counselor Lamar. Counselor Lamarc, sorry, you guys have to direct my counseling. Counselor Lamarc?
Heather. I'll definitely be supporting this. I'm looking forward to increasing efficiency in our Public Works. It's a great thing. I know how difficult it is trying to find a break. When we've got clay, we've got different kinds of material, water will follow a pipe along ways before people can find it. They could spend a week trying to find a break and that's more than this is gonna cost us, so. Thanks, great job trying to find, finding this technology.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Counselor Coleman?
No, I'm just wondering, this finds breaks, but like, how many breaks do we have in the city right now? That our crews cannot keep up with? Because this is gonna find more breaks. If we don't have the extra crews, well then, you know, what's good to find more breaks? We're not gonna be able to fix them. You know? So, you know, it's gotta go hand in hand here. If we're gonna find all the breaks, it's shitty. We have got to have the staff ready and able to fix these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay, I'm gonna call for a question. All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, Carrie. Good observation, Councilor. Over. Eight point three, a resolution to approve the tabulation of prices for cell painting inside the public safety building. Resolution two zero two zero one eight six moved by Counselor Wong, seconded by Deputy Mayor Ellsworth. Whereas on September twenty-first, twenty twenty, council ordered the proposal for painting of cell blocks inside the public safety building to dynamo coatings limited for their tender price of sixty thousand eight hundred and forty dollars with additional taxes as per tender file number twenty dash one two nine seven seven. And whereas Dynamo Coatings Limited has denied carrying out the work and asked for termination of the award because of the inability to meet the timeline. Now, therefore, it resolved that council approved the recommendation of the purchasing agent and award proposal for painting of the cell blocks inside the public safety building to modern general contractors for their tender price of sixty-five thousand with additional taxes as per tender file number one two nine seven seven.
Yes, as it was mentioned, this is a deal that was done between the province of Manitoba and the city of Thompson to get funding to do painting of the RCMP cells. Along with the RCMP, council had already awarded this on September twenty-first to the company that's mentioned. But then the company was very clear that they would no longer be able to read the timeline that was put in the RFP. When we tried to hold them to the timeline, they then requested that the contract be terminated. So the contract was terminated, legal advice was sought and was very clear from our legal advice that we could go to the next best bidder from the original tender. And that's what's being drawn for today so that we can complete that work and not lose that grant from the province. So there's a slight increase in cost, but they reported that they can meet the timeline. Will require a safety, not safety, all their employees must have security clearance in the RCMP prior to starting the work.
Okay, Counselor Wong, you signed it. Do you have any comments?
Just a quick question about how much more that we are talking about?
Five, I think, Jenny, yeah?
Five dollars?
Four thousand, four and forty.
Eight percent.
Oh, forty-two hundred and sixty dollars plus taxes.
So, okay, so you know, for what? That means this company can fulfill the timeline to continue whatever, or did they ever start it?
The company have never started and hadn't even completed the security clearance process.
For the old one, right?
That's right.
So this is a new one?
That's right.
If we approve tonight.
Counselor Fong?
Is there a penalty to the dynamo company for lost time or like the difference in pricing and stuff like that? Is there a penalty for not complying?
I don't believe so. I don't think we set up bonds on that, because the job is so small, the cost to do a lot of that, even if you were taking those sorts of bonds.
Counselor Valentino?
Thank you, Mayor Smook. I'll be supporting this. It's good to see that we had other bidders, we have somebody to go to. My only ask could be that administration follow up or a manager of infrastructure follows up, because this is an aggressive timeline. I mean, it was a lot of work advocating with the Minister of Justice to get this partnership, so we just ask that we continually follow up to ensure that they get their timeline for their criminal checks in and it was started. Thank you.
Yeah, I can confirm that they've already started the process. So the administration's been proactive, gotten the forms to them, already completing and working with the RCMP to fast track them to get the project.
Any further questions, concerns? Okay, we'll call for the question. All those in favor? Counselor Lamarc?
Thank you.
This one keeps freezing.
I can't, I can't see the TV, so. Six point four is a resolution authorizing administration to enter into an agreement between Mandible Public Insurance and the city of Thompson for the loan of this speed display devices. Resolution two zero two zero one eight seven moved by Counselor Valentino, seconded by Counselor Fountain. It resolved that council authorized administration to enter into an agreement with Mandible Public Insurance for the loan of two multiple speed display devices. Administration?
Now, this is brought previously to the Public Works Committee, Manitoba Public Insurance's offer for these signs. I believe their only big requirement is they want access to the data. And I believe at the current time, the thoughts are to put one of these moving around town is needed, but RCMP wants to see one around the hospital. Possibly one on Princeton Drive, the third location, I do not recall at this time, but the idea is that can be moved around as needed and then to see if there's any trends that are identified. On how people are traveling or speeding through different areas of town.
Thank you. Counselor Valentino?
Thank you, Mayor Smook. Yeah, I'll be supporting, talk about slowing the process down with COVID. This was almost a year ago that this was brought to the Public Works Committee and not only will we share the data with them, but would also hopefully make our streets a little bit safer because voters will be able to see what their speed is by seeing that posted on the sign, so hopefully the safety aspect also to people.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Counselor Wong?
Is it possible to change it to loan to own?
That's a good question. We could, we could ask that. Though if it's owned by them and something goes wrong, then I believe they check it up, so. But I can always ask.
Counselor Valentino?
Thanks, Mayor Smook. Just to follow up to Counselor Wong's comment, I, I believe when this was first brought to Public Works that Mandible Public Insurance only picks certain cities or municipalities for so many years throughout the province. So it's kind of, we're getting the offer now for till August of twenty twenty-three. And then it will probably move to another municipality or city in the province.
Counselor Culver?
I got a good question about the accuracy. Because I know the one on Princeton, I was going twenty there a day and the sign was saying forty-three. You know, thirty. And I look down, I, you know, I'm not doing forty-three, but the sign is saying forty-three, so I would like the somebody to look in to the accuracy of these machines, please.
So would that be one of the ones that we own or would that already be the one on loan for NPI?
It was on Princeton last week.
The ones from NPI aren't deployed yet, so that could possibly be the city's off to look into the calibration on those.
Any further questions, concerns? Question, all those in favor? Does Brian go to say?
Yeah.
Carrie? We're now moving into bylaws. Bylaw nine point one is the first reading of bylaw two zero zero one dash twenty twenty, winter in wastewater plan rate bylaw twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. Resolution two zero two zero one eight eight moved by Counselor Pro, seconded by Counselor Fountain. It resolved the bylaw two zero zero one dash twenty twenty, being a bylaw of the city of Thompson in the province of Manitoba to establish water and wastewater rates within the said municipality, be introduced and read a first time. Administration?
Jenny, yeah? Actually, Brian, I think there's something I was hoping to make. On Schedule A in section one point one, that is a rounding error. So the commodity rate per cubic meter should be three eighty-one and dollars seventy-nine point one, which equals five dollars and sixty-seven, and not five fifty-nine.
Thank you. Counselor Pro? Any other counselors? Counselor Wong?
Just a recall, please.
Okay. Any other counselors, comments? Administration?
Yeah, I just wanna make the comment that this is the first step in the process. Once this is passed, I believe that administration would forward this on to the public utilities board for consideration and as part of our rate study, I believe, right?
Jenny?
Um, yeah, so when it's received by the water services, or sorry, the public utilities board, they will post public notice and then the public will have a chance to send questions and responses to the public utilities board. I wish and the public utilities board will determine whether they hold a public hearing for this or not.
Thank you. Counselor Culver?
I got, the question I wanna know is, to the average person, how much is this bill gonna go up?
Jenny, do you have that answer?
We can use me as a reference, you want. I pay ninety-two dollars a court.
And the monthly is increasing from ninety-two dollars and seventy-six cents to one hundred dollars and fifty-three cents. That's just the basic fourteen cubic meters of water.
Okay, and I'm sure your question, Counselor Culver, anybody else? So no more discussion? Counselor Lamarc has no answer for anything? We'll call for the question. All those in favor, oh, and pardon me, it's a recorded vote as requested of Counselor Wong. In a recorded vote, all those in favor? Counselor Valentino approved Deputy Mayor Ellsworth, Mayor Smook, Counselor McMurdo, Counselor Culver, Counselor Fountain, and Counselor Lamarc. And opposed? Counselor Wong. Carrie? Nine point two is the second reading of bylaw two zero zero two dash twenty twenty, the municipal bylaw enforcement enabling act. Resolution two zero two zero dash one eight nine moved by Deputy Mayor Ellsworth, seconded by Counselor Valentino. It resolved that bylaw two zero zero two dash two zero two zero, being a bylaw of the city of Thompson to amend by law nineteen fifty-three dash two zero one seven, being a bylaw of the city of Thompson to allow enforcement of city bylaws, including parking bylaws under the municipal bylaw enforcement act as amended, be given second reading. Administration?
Just to add on to that, we also want to make an amendment to the bylaw to keep the wording consistent throughout the bylaw under section eighteen of two. To change the words to director, director of fire and public safety or the public safety manager, I deleted and replaced with the words deputy officer. And I will also go through, there's a lot of copy and paste of some of the stuff, so I will go through and make sure there's a background for it.
Okay. And they, so you're requesting an amendment to this?
Yeah, so, yeah, an additional amendment.
It's a friendly amendment. So the way it's currently written, if I can explain the way it's currently written, it names specific positions. The, the change is to name it to, what is it, a designated? Designated officer, which is more generic, which is done through the delegation of power. So anyone that the city administration or council decides to delegate the RT, then falls under that rather than having a specific title person.
Okay, and so first word to the amendment.
As a friendly amendment, you would just say, yes, it's okay, proceed.
Yeah. Does that cause everybody to agree on the general amendment?
I'm.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll call for the question. All those in favor, or does anybody wanna speak on it first? Counselor Fong, sorry.
Hey, I didn't support this last time based on my maybe erroneous thought that the individual making judgments was associated with the city of Thompson. Can you clarify to me precisely how the city of Thompson is going to maintain a separation between that individual and the city of Thompson?
So the question is, what's the relationship between the screening officer and the city of Thompson? And is there undue influence between the city and the screening officer?
I don't believe there is. I mean, there's an appointment booked. Paperwork is provided, whether it's a bylaw officer or an RCMP member, they do up their package, that package is put into a folder. And then that package is given to the screening officer to review. So when a, a sitting takes place, it's just the screening officer and the person that's contesting their ticket that are in the room. So there's no, they don't go, the screening officer would not go downstairs or would speak to an RCMP member outside of any paperwork that they would provide it. It was a contract.
Yeah, that wasn't the question, Aunt Mayor. What I was wanting was, more specifically, is that screening officer paid for by the city of Thompson? What contract is in place, if there is one? I'm worried, I'm wondering about the ties between the city of Thompson and the screening officer, not how the process unfolds.
It is a contract with the city and the city does pay fifty dollars per hearing that's heard. And the contract went through city council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'll ask for a recorded vote on this.
Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think last council meeting, when we approved the first reading, I did ask the question, what is the actual impact by using the court system and using the screening officer? So we did get some feedback from the administration about how it works. But one, one, one item I wanted to address that is like a speeding ticket or any bylaw ticket will not go to the queen's bench. But in the report, they say queen's bench, I kind of threw me off that one. And my second question is, in the history of Thompson of Manitoba, how many times did we really use a lawyer to fight a speeding ticket? Do we have any data out there? Thank you.
Sonya would know best, but I believe we were constantly in court paying those fees, right, in multiple hearings a day?
Yeah. We were there quite often, with the tickets, the bylaw officer would attend as well. I'm gonna, I would have to check the finance, we'd probably go back and get you the dollar, and if we actually spent the more fees just for tickets. I would probably average, since I've been with the cities, probably go two or three a month.
So there's the calculation of the cost to the court, plus all of our staff sitting there waiting for their court time. Plus the individual who's showing up there, the loss of their time as well. And then the fee we paid to the lawyer for each one of those tickets. And on most of the cases, we would come unfavorably and I believe.
Most times it came into the favor of the, the person contesting the ticket. Because it wasn't working in our favor, because our lawyer would have a conversation with that other person and were, alas, beat their case to the judge instead of working on the city's behalf.
I'm not interested about the lawyer, no. I'm more interested, do we ever use the lawyer for fighting? So if we do, I would like to have that number to see, because from, for that, I did not say how many cases that we did use lawyer. All we say is like, I understand with the staff, we'd be stuck in the court for the time. Blah, 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 but I just, my question is like, how many times we did use a lawyer to fight the ticket? If you do, what is, in the history, so that's, that's the data I wanted to know, for personal knowledge, thank you.
Just for clarity, you're talking in the past, prior to this bylaw? Just the history?
Okay, the history.
We can get that.
Councillor Fountain?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just what I've heard already today leads me to believe that there's issues. First of all, I think it's important that we should state that the tickets are not necessarily a revenue source. I don't see them as that. I only speak for myself. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I feel that the, the ticket should be paying for that fee that the city incurs when they, when they challenge or fight that in court. I, I feel very strongly and will not support this because I believe that at least somebody, and I may be the only one, and maybe rightly so, but someone needs to recognize that this is, has the potential to be a biased system, although I'm, I'm not saying that it is. But I'm saying the potential is there, so I will not support it.
Thank you. Anything more else, sir?
So again, another subject we had lots of discussion on in committee. And, and I will tell you, if I thought it would be biased, I certainly would support it either. The way we discussed it, the way I looked at it, if you go over the courtroom, and I've been there a few times, not for myself personally, I might say. But on the docket, there's lots of cases that ties up that system. The other thing, it's a lot of intimidation for people when they go to court. This is a lot friendlier for people. They do still have the right, they don't like the decision of our screening officer to apply to the Queen's bench. When you want to talk about time, whether it's a lawyer's time, what is our administration time? Dollars are dollars. And I made the defer that we just collect money and then if we have to go to court, we pay a lawyer. That's not, that's not a very good system. I was budgeting. I want to keep as much money as I can for things that we need to do as a city. So I definitely will be supportive because I think it's good for the person that gets a ticket, to be able to comment on the intimidation. It's good that we don't tie up the court system. And in fact, thirdly, they always have an option if they don't agree with the decision to go to the Queen's bench. Thank you.
Councillor Valentino?
Yeah, just to clarify a few things for the public. That this direction has come from the province of Manitoba. We already are using this system as a city for parking and traffic violations. This bylaw is just to add animal control to it. So we already are using this process. This is just in addition to our bylaw for animal control. I will be supporting this as is tonight. Thank you.
Yes, and I'd also like to comment about four to five years ago, when we first introduced the screening officer to the municipalities, it was at Association of Manitoba Municipalities. And their intent then too was that it would further encompass different tickets and different things so as not to encumber the court system. So this is sort of a natural progression of where they were expecting us to go. Councillor Fountain?
Mark.
Okay, okay. Sorry, councillor Dunbar?
Hello. Yeah, I'd, I'm, thank, thank you councillor Valentino for reiterating the explanation there. And we're, that, I just wanted to say I'd support this as well. Hoping that we can clear up some of the docket for the courts for more serious offenses. And I'm sure that this can be handled easier and with less stress and with less cost to the city and to the people involved. Thank you. I'll be supporting it.
Thank you. Anybody further? Call for the question, a recorded vote as per councillor Fountain. All those in favor? Voting in favor, councillor Valentino. Councillor Pro, councillor Wong, deputy mayor Ellsworth, mayor Smook, councillor McMyrtle, councillor Colburn, I guess. Dunbar and opposed, councillor Fountain. Thank you. And that will be as friendly amendment, right?
Sorry to interrupt you.
Nine point three is the third reading of bylaw two zero zero two twenty three. Resolution two zero two zero dash one nine zero moved by councillor Pro, seconded by councillor Colburn. It resolved the bylaw two zero zero two dash twenty twenty, be given a third and final reading, and then it do now pass. This will be automatically recorded vote. Administration?
Just to say this is going to be a recorded vote.
Thank you. Any councillors, any further conversation? Nothing from Brian. Okay. Seeing none in a recorded vote, all those in favor? Councillor Valentino, councillor Pro, councillor Wong, deputy mayor Ellsworth, mayor Smook, councillor McMyrtle, councillor Colburn, and councillor Dunbar. Opposed, councillor Fountain. That brings us to the mayor's report. The report tonight is from October the twentieth to November second, twenty twenty. Along with city manager Anthony McGinnis, we participate in daily Northern Hill Region Incident Command meetings. This keeps us up to date on COVID in, in the north and how the hospital system, how the screening systems, testing sites, all that is worked. And I must say, it is very knowledgeable. And just for the city residents, I had a question this morning about testing in Thompson openly happening five days a week. If the testing in Thompson is seven days a week, Thompson, Flint, and the Paw all test seven days a week. Flint Farm may be going down to five days a week. As of the last couple of weeks, it's been seven. And Thompson and the Paw for the near future will stay at that. And along with my colleagues on council as well as administration, we had our quarterly meeting with Thompson Chamber of Commerce on October the twenty first. On October the twenty second, myself and deputy mayor Ellsworth attended the celebration one fifty and the birth of Louis Riel. October the twenty third, Anthony and I were interviewed about healthcare in the north. It was pretty extensively, we were on the phone for a couple of hours. October the twenty fourth, I attended the Norman North Stars and gave greetings at their home opener. Along with my colleagues on councils as well as administration, we had a review of the twenty nineteen audited financial statements with the auditor on October twenty eighth. Then we celebrated Halloween, which I must say, thank you for all the respect people had for each other. Some people chose to partake in Halloween and some chose not to. And I think from all things I've heard, it went very well. We had various committee meetings were held, recreation, community services, communications, development review, finance, administration, legislative and intergovernment affairs. We have been changed to the north as cold orange, and now it is the whole province wide is cold orange. So our, some of our restrictions are groups of five, if you have people in your home, yourself, plus no more than five people. Stay home when you are sick and as much as possible besides that. Designate one person to do the shopping in the house. That means one person, not you today, husband tomorrow, kids the next day. Try saying one person that does the, the shopping and goes out. Self distance and beware of your surroundings. As always, wash your hands, sanitize if that's not possible. Follow the rules and be understanding of those and that wish to go the extra mile. We don't need that. So we did get a letter from Minister Squires that just reiterated all of that. So I want to thank you. And then further to that, I would just want to say that on Wednesday will be our reorganizational meeting of council. And if anybody wants to attend, now we can have people in the building. Call Tammy two oh four six seven 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 nine three eight to book your spot because it will be very limited to the number of people we can have here. And I'd like to say thank you for the community in general, and especially to the wives for stepping up to the plate. We are moving in the right direction for COVID, but that means that we still have to be very stringent in order to stay on that path. I'll go to the rest of council, see if they had, were in attendance of anything on behalf of the city. Councillor Fountain?
If you, I'm, 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 I'd just like to mention that every year we, we make note of, remember and say November eleventh, and we do it after the fact. Happy this year I can get to jump on it ahead of time and just recognize the people from our community, one of whom was recognized before. Another of whom has worked on the Snowbirds and had quite a high profile, at least within the city of Thompson, I think. So I'd just like to offer, I'm sure, maybe on behalf of all of council, a big thanks for their service.
And I'd like to thank you for recognizing, as you say, we're usually behind April. There is a limited service. Keep in touch with the Legion and they will keep us up to date on how the service is going virtual this year.
Also like to extend my condolences to the Valley employees that have received bad news last year. No more comment other than that. I just hope everyone lies on their feet and I wish them all well.
Thank you, as do the rest of us council. Anything further? Okay, for that, I have a motion to adjourn. Councillor Valentino, deputy mayor Ellsworth, all in favor?